I'd like to call the, to order the GIG Harbor City Council Study Session of Thursday, February 11th, 2020. The time is 3:32. Due to public health concerns, this meeting will only be accessible by following the instructions that we put on our website. I'll call the meeting to order. Councilmember Abersole.
Here.
Councilmember Dinsen will join us shortly. Councilmember Franch.
Here.
Councilmember Hines.
Here.
Councilman Markley's been excused. Councilmember Rothenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Woo.
Here.
This is Mayor Kuhn. We've got our Public Works Director Jeff Langham.
Here.
And Katrina should be joining us soon. Jeff, would you give her a call?
Sure.
Thanks. We've got our city. Molly had something, so we've got our Assistant City Clerk, Open Government Administrator Josh Decker.
Here.
And I don't believe we're going to have any guests. It does seem, say, we have a guest, but I don't know if that's true. Anyone else that I, I'm, I'm sorry, what?
We have three panelists, or attendees, or four now.
Okay. And yes, I see that. For attendees. And Bob Larson had planned on being out, and that's okay. So with that, we will silently say the Pledge of Allegiance. We've got two items to discuss. The first will be funding for the construction of the Community Paddler's Dock. And the second one will be property, whether the treatment plan for plant for discussion. And with that, I'll turn it over to our Public Works Director Jeff Langham.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. I'm just gonna start some presentation slides here. Josh, would you mind providing me the ability to share? It says I'm not able to.
Yeah, apologies. Let me see if I can fix that.
Okay.
Yep, there it goes.
Okay, here. Okay. There we go. Can everyone see my PowerPoint screen? Okay, thank you. So today, and we're all, I'm sure you all saw the memo and the information provided as part of the packet. But today, I wanted to make sure that we had a chance to review for at least three topics, maybe four. First of all, I want to go through a quick review of the original budgeted amount for the Community Paddler's Dock project. And discuss the current construction cost estimate that was included in the memo for today. I want to propose a plan for funding the difference between the budgeted amount and the current construction cost estimate for the project. I want to take time to discuss if the GIG Harbor Canoe and Kayak Race Team will be asked, if the city has appetite to ask the canoe and kayak race team to participate in any of the construction funding. Right now, the budget doesn't show them participating. And then lastly, if there's interest by council, I can answer any questions on the actual construction cost estimate that came from David O. Consulting Group, DCG, and we can address that at the end. So that's what I like to go through now. So, let's see here. What can I do for this? Too many screens going on. Did the screen change for everyone? Okay, thank you. Okay. So in the, in 2018, the original Community Paddler's Dock project, which is what you see here on the screen now, that was estimated in 2018 at a cost of $1.2 million for the entire project. In order to get this project going and off the ground, the canoe and kayak race team talked to the city and decided to move ahead and fund the initial design and permitting of the dock. That cost was about $70,000 that they invested. That investment was already been made. That essentially let this project and got this project concept designed, which was the one you see on the screen, into the permitting queue for the state and federal permit requirements. And that's a key because that oftentimes takes a year or more to get through the process. So so that was kicked off in the end, near the end of 2018. The permit applications were formally submitted in 2018 and then proceeded to go through the federal process. And as that went forward, the city and the team tentatively agreed to pay for the project by having the city pay about $700,000 of the project costs and the team pay the $500,000, remaining $500,000. So though nothing formal was ever adopted by council and the team to establish that that funding mechanism. It was just all based off of the original lease that was between the city and the canoe and kayak race team. So that proceeded, went through, the permitting was sitting there. And then by April of 2020, the city and the team got together and jointly accepted a lease amendment that was associated with the Community Paddler's Dock design that you see on the screen. And when that was put together in April 2020, the cost for the project went up to about $1.4 million. Councilmember Franch, do you have your hand up? Did you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to just clarify for the record that you mentioned that they were going to pay, that they were going to have, they were going to have the funds credited towards their lease payments.
Yes, and that's what they're doing currently with the money that they've already spent. It's credited towards the lease payments.
I just wanted to, just for, for the record.
Yeah. So, so again, so by the time we got to April of 2020, the project that you see on the screen, the cost of that was now about $1.4 million. And
I'd be in charge of hand raising and lowering. If you would make sure that people lower their hands or you do it for them. Thank you.
Thanks. So so again, this, this project was then by, was then up around $1.4 million. And we, that, that dollar amount was used to help put together that lease amendment that is now in place. And so we proceeded along under that understanding that the team would start fundraising. Of course, there's always COVID in the background, and I'll get into that in a bit, but there's always COVID in the background that makes things like fundraising more difficult. But as we proceeded in the year, by middle of 2020, the city, as we all know, received an offer from Jerkovic Pier LLC to partner between the city and the Jerkovic Pier group to have a Community Paddler's Dock instead of the design you see here. Instead, have a Community Paddler's Dock that's located in their existing aquatic lease that's located in front of Ansich Park. And that's when we came up with this design. Probably see that hopefully on your screen. So that's what we coined Alternative F, but that's the design that we worked with and developed with Jerkovic Pier LLC for the master agreement that we subsequently signed with them in August of 2020. So this new concept not only provided more open water, it also provided a larger view corridor from in front of the park. And that those were, those were significant benefits, but we also knew that it was going to cost less than the 1.4 million because there wasn't the significant amount of peers to remove, rebuild, and construct. So we knew that it was going to be a cost savings. This new Community Paddler's Dock concept was, was then developed as we proceeded into the end of 2020. And as we went into budget discussions, we looked at the two estimates that we had in place at that time. And, and let me tell you what those two are. So we had two estimates in hand. We had provided to us by the Jerkovic family, their January 2020 construction cost estimate provided to them by marine floats. That construction cost estimate was just under $95,000. And then we had the formal 2018 project cost estimate that was at $1.2 million. Again, I'm going back and forth between these because they're, they're different in years, but the, but the formal cost estimates we had were the marine floats cost estimate and the 2018 project estimate. Within that $1.2 million project estimate, the actual construction of that original design was set at $900,000 in 2018. So it was, it was probably upwards of a million by the time we got into 2020 and well north of a million by the time we got into 2021. Now, when we're putting together the budget for 2021, staff knew that neither of the two estimates were equivalent to the Community Paddler's Dock concept that you see on the screen now. But we, we knew that the final cost would be somewhere in between the two estimates. So in the city's 2021 budget, we used the $400,000 project cost. And then we only, as part of that budget, if you recall, it only has the city funding the entire portion of the project. Now, staff has been, since we embarked upon the final design of the, of the Community Paddler's Dock, as you see it on the screen now, and as we're proceeding through permitting, we worked with the consultant DCG to reduce costs wherever possible. We've been working on this since, I think, October of last year. And cities, but I have to say, we, we only can do so much. This isn't like a city project that we have where we've got engineers on board who are specialized in this. This is marine design. These are marine engineers. These aren't civil engineers like you that we have on staff here. And so we're not allowed to adjust the design, meet, change the standards for marine engineering on a public project like this. So we've been working with the ECG and we've been providing them alternatives on where we thought we could reduce costs. But the end result is that the estimate that was provided to us, and that's the one that was provided in your packet, is north quite a bit higher than what we had budgeted. Any questions at this point? Okay. So we have this cost estimate that you see on the screen. This, this isn't how much we're going to pay. It's just for budgeting purposes, how much the engineer of record thinks that it's going to cost us. And so at this point, we are proposing to council that we look at alternatives for funding the project to, so that we can get it done. Just a quick summary of where we are right now. You can see this cost estimate says it's 100% cost estimate. The plans are 100%. The specs are approaching 100%. And what that means is we're getting very close to being out to bid. Permitting wise, we've gone through all the federal permits. They've, they've provided us via email all of their mitigation requirements. We have those incorporated into our plans. And what we're waiting for now is to get on the calendar and get through, get through SEPA. We have one more document to submit so we can finalize that. And then once we get through SEPA, we can get on the account and have a SEPA determination. Maybe we can get on the calendar for the hearing examiner. All said and done, we're looking at getting this project out to bid in probably May or June. So I'm going to pause there for a second. I see councilmembers have some, or ends up, Councilmember Rothenberg.
Yes, is that a misprint there under floating dock? It went from $125 to $120,000? Or is that?
Let me see. Oh, it's, I'm sorry. What, the way this works is that the, and it's, it's not able to be seen in this print, but there, on that line, floating dock, it, the, the quantity is 966 square feet. And the unit price is $125 per square foot. And so the 120,000 is
I got it now.
Those columns, you can't see in this. They're, they're, the wording is, is hard to see in this. Sorry about that.
And Councilmember Hines. You're on, yeah.
On mute. Okay. Yeah, as I mentioned the other night, one of the big differences that I noted was in the grounding pads before, in the prior design, the grounding pads basically were cement blocks sitting on the bottom, essentially. And the, the grounding posts came down and sat on those. In this design, the grounding, there's two piles, two foundation piles driven under each one of those grounding pads. And then the grounding pad sits on top of those two pile, those two pilings, okay? And that is worth at least 80 and 90, about $90,000 was my guess. Well, coming, coming out of your numbers here. The foundation piles, there's eight of them at 10,000 each. There's $80,000 right there that was not in the original estimate. And I understand the number was going to be different because the original kayak club's design was in deeper water. He were further out. So you didn't have that many of them, okay?
Right.
But the big thing is under none of those were there pilings that I was aware of. Okay. It never showed in the design. It never showed the cost. So my question is, is why are we going with this design when it looked like before? The other one that was designed, again, by engineers, that they managed to avoid driving pilings for these grounding pads?
Well, let me, let me be clear. So the original 2018 design in the deeper water, you're right, had fewer of these foundation piles, but they did have foundation piles. What they didn't have was they didn't have the precast caps. Those precast caps were added in our design because of the need to have the docks set. When, when the tide goes out, the dock has to come down, set on the ground or on the seabed and be ADA compliant. So we had to put beams across there to try and help the dock, as it sets on the ground, be less steep, less angled. But the original design did have foundation piles in it.
Wow. It didn't, it didn't show up on the drawings that I saw. Maybe I saw the wrong.
Well, those drawings that you, that you saw, we only got to conceptual 30% design on those drawings. But, but I can, I mean, I, I can have, I, I can go look through those and see where they were, but the, the DCG originally had foundation piles driven. And just for your reference, DCG and the, the people who work for DCG did something very similar to in, in Bainbridge Island in Winslow at their city dock with foundation piles. And they found, and they did this in 2018, this design in 2018. They found that when it was constructed, that the, the docks, as they come down and the water goes out, the docks were supposed to have the feet that were on the bottom of the docks line up and sit on top of those foundation piles. And they found that the, the quality of, you, you can't align those, drive those piles as accurately as you want them to. And so they were driven into the ground and they were, as they were driven into the ground, they weren't in the precise location where these feet would come down and sit on top of them at low tide. And so that's where in our design, they, and they had to go back and do a change order with the contractor. And it cost them quite a bit of money to do a change order after this was already said and done. And so that was done in 2018. And so for our design, they added these precast caps at a total of, you can see, $14,000. And those caps will allow the floats to come down and sit, and they don't have to be precisely sitting on top of the piles. They just have to sit on the caps and they will, they will sit appropriately while keeping ADA compliance.
A couple of other things. So we, we do know that the tax will be changed. It says 9.5% that will be changed to our city's percent.
And, and just so you know, that the actual dollar amount, that 53,684 is at the city's 8.7%. They just forgot to take out 9.7 and change it to 8.7 or 9.5.
And you had also mentioned that, you know, this dock closes at dusk. So I believe you mentioned that where there isn't going to be all this electrical or because kayaks don't need electrical. So is that, is that correct? We got three prices there, 16,000 so much, 6,500, 95, 5,900?
No, we, we, yeah, you're right. The, the dock does close at dusk, but we are going to be putting lighting. The, the only thing that, that we originally, the, all of these electrical items were costing the city over $50,000. And then we worked back and we said, we want just bare minimum lighting like we do have in our other parks. If you go, for example, if you go to Jersic Welcome Plaza, there's still lighting there, even though the park is technically closed at dusk. There's still lighting at the Welcome Plaza up on top and everything else. We're still providing minimal lighting, just like we do down in front of Ansich Waterfront Park under the canopy. But majority of the electrical, I will say, about half that electrical, the wiring cable and the boxes and supports, that is just to reconnect the Jerkovich's float system to the upland power. So even if we had zero lighting, we would still have an electrical bid item here.
Okay. Councilmember Abersole.
Yeah, so I assume, or maybe Jeff was already gonna, kind of already asked, that what do you want us to tell you to do? And will you present options? Or do you want us to just throw out some ideas? Because I'll just throw out the idea that we should go back to the kayak club and see if we can get them to keep their capital campaign going or restart it and see if we can get $300,000.
Okay, let me, let me go ahead and continue because that's my next part of the presentation if there's no more questions.
Okay.
Okay. So what I am proposing is to actually look at, and what you have on the screen now is the three different columns. The left column is the existing amount as identified in the budget totaling $400,000. The middle column is the proposed amount that the city would continue to fund the entire project because we were going to pay $700,000 or more with the original design. And so I'm proposing we increase park impact fees by 130,000. We tap into LTAC money because of the tourism it brings. We pull $100,000 from general fund or strategic reserve. You could say we're strategic reserve in there and then keep what that's 240,000 of HBZ. And I put on the right side what you would see if you did do that proposed amount, what the ending fund balance would be in those four funds. And why I didn't initially go, there, there always the, always the alternative of going to the canoe and kayak race team and asking them to pay the difference. If you recall, when we had this discussion with the canoe and kayak race team in, in March and April of 2020, they couldn't fundraise in the amount of time that we needed to continue the permitting and construction of this. Again, we have a project that we want to get done and get available and online immediately. It will take them quite a bit of time to do the fundraising, especially in this era of COVID, to get the funds raised. And so if we were to pause and go back and amend the, or modify the lease amendment we have in the canoe and kayak race team and say, instead of asking for $500,000, for example, then we would say, we just, we're looking for $330,000 to make up the difference. By the time we go through that and the fundraising occurs, we would have to pause everything associated with this project. And instead of being under construction in October, hopefully of this year, we'll be under construction in October of next year. So it will cause delays and, and we can go from there. So, Councilmember Woo.
You're on mute.
That was pretty much my question is, is, because that's a whole year's time there that our citizens and the team will not be able to use this, will not be able to get in the water from here. So, yeah, yeah. Thank you for that timeline. That was important to me.
Sure. And so following up on that, you know, this is, this is the proposal that I've come up with to keep this project on schedule moving forward and getting it completed for the, for the citizens to use, hopefully, but for, well, before the end of 2021. But depending on how council wants to proceed, there are other options. We should also consider the team's existing lease amendment. And like I was saying earlier, will that, will we need to modify it? Again, that amendment from April of 2020 has the city funding at least $700,000 in costs and the team funding at least $500,000 in costs. Remember, the total project cost in April of 2020 was, was anticipated in the $1.4 million range. And then when we had the master agreement with Jerkovic Pier LLC, we, we knew it was going to be less, and that's how we got to the $400,000 in the city budget. The city and the team have not gotten back together to modify this lease amendment. So right now, the team still is obligated to fundraise $500,000 as outlined in the amendment. Now, there is a time coming up in, it was a year from adoption, I believe. So we're talking mid-April, I believe. The team is supposed to be fundraising, I think it's, I think it's $166,000. It's anyway, there's, there's a significant amount of money they're supposed to, but we didn't account for COVID. I mean, that's one of the big things we've been talking about is, is, is could they, could they have even fundraised at that point? But that's a little bit of a separate discussion. But we, we need to go back and modify the existing amendment regardless whether we say the city's going to pay for it all or we don't, and we want to say that the team should be paying for some of it. And what that some means, I don't know. That's part of the discussion. I, I would I would be hesitant to say that we go anywhere above $200,000, but of course, that's up to council. But regardless, we need to go back soon and possibly March and start, or sooner, and start those discussions with the team about what that modify, modification to the existing lease amendment will look like. But if we do eliminate their fundraising requirement altogether, this may have other implications as it relates to the original lease. So we have a lot to consider as we move forward. I can tell you that the city and the team have had ongoing communication about how the team's going to participate in this. And up, and just a reminder, up until a month or so ago, or even less, actually, the team had been understanding that the city was going to be paying for the entire project as part of the 2021 budget. It wasn't until mid-January or even late January, when this estimate came out, that the team had heard that they, that the city's budget may not fund the entire project costs.
Okay, just a sec. Josh, can you refresh? Jim, Jim can hear us, but he can't. He's been wanting to speak for a while. So I don't know how, how you refresh, but.
I don't, I don't have any access to do anything for Jim. You'd have to log out and log back in again.
Josh, Councilmember Franch is in the attendees list.
Yeah.
Oh, I see him.
Oh, and so is Councilmember Dinsen.
List. Just one, just one sec. Okay, you bet. Thank you. Okay, I do want to acknowledge that we have Katrina. What we did is, yeah, she's there. Can we have Community Development Department Katrina Knudsen? And Robin Dinsen, are you with us now?
This is Katrina and I'm here. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you. Councilmember Dinsen, are you there? Okay, we'll go to the questions. Councilmember Hines.
Oh, yeah, I had one question on the LTAC. Is LTAC, have they been approached on that proposal at all?
No. You know, I chair the LTAC just as other people chair the other, other commissions. And I told them a year ago, and we were going to try to come up with 400,000 ourselves when it was 1.2 and the kayakers, that basically this is tourist related. And they didn't say anything about it. You know, they haven't had any comments on it. But um I haven't brought it to them because I would want to wait for council. But you know, this is to me, this is tourist related, definitely. And I think a hundred thousand dollars personally, someone that works with the LTAC and the chairs. I think it's right up its its alley where so of at least a hundred thousand dollars. I don't think we could afford more than a hundred out of LTAC, but I think a hundred thousand dollars is appropriate to come from LTAC. If we if we did um if we did ask the kayakers to pay a couple hundred thousand, it would be after we build it so we don't lose out on the timeframe. And Jeff and I have thought where we would take a hundred thousand dollars less from park impact fees and a hundred thousand dollars out from the general fund. And then we wouldn't be taking any money from the general fund. This is after after we build it and we if we got reimbursed. Uh Councilmember Franch, who did that answer your question?
That that answered my question, but I I had another point that I wanted to make. I I think the 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 original understanding that he was going to pay uh seven hundred thousand kayak club was going to pay five hundred thousand toward the famous one point two million dollar dock.
Right.
I I would have no problem as a bookend. Uh by the way, there's two bookends. One of them is paddler's pay zero. And the other bookend in my mind is you take five twelfths of seven hundred thirty thousand dollars. And that would say, hey, it's the same proportion as we had before between the city and the kayak. As a starting point. And uh and the city would pick up seven twelfths of the seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars. That would be consistent with what we had in the original understanding. Okay.
Have you done? What does that come out to?
I haven't done the math on it, but I can do it pretty clear.
Yes.
Okay.
Far off. Okay, we'll figure that. Yeah, as you guys, I'll let you figure it out. I got kayakker, but I got.
And it would also include as before and offset to their portion of it would be what they had already invested in the design and phase of their original design. I think it would be, I I think it would be extremely difficult for some people in the city to accept the fact that uh a year or so ago, we were at seven hundred thousand dollars for the city. And the kayak club is at five hundred thousand dollars. And now we find ourselves at seven hundred thirty thousand dollars for the city and the kayak club for essentially zero beyond what they call the sunken design. I think that'd be a tough sell. I think there should be some um equity from the kayak club in this thing.
Right. So um I'm gonna, Jeff, would you put in the original seventy or eighty into that calculation? And before you answer that, uh well, go ahead. What would that?
So um let me just say, out of the new proposed project budget of seven hundred thirty thousand dollars, seven twelfths of that is four hundred twenty five thousand.
If that'd be the city's chunk, okay.
So five twelfths of that is three hundred four thousand.
Okay.
Roughly.
Okay, okay. So I I I would put that out as a starting point in 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 and if you're if we're splitting down a a ratio of city versus uh kayak club, it's consistent with where we were before. And as far as COVID goes, I I would not be adverse to an installment payment system for the the kayak club. I understand the problem today, right now, but going forward, uh you know, it's not going to last forever. Um to me, it would be a reasonable approach.
Okay, and Councilmember Franch had been trying to talk uh because he got bumped off. So if Councilmember Rodenberg, if you would just let him go first and then we'll go after you. Go ahead, Councilmember Franch.
Uh yeah, thank you. Uh I don't know what happened there, but could you go back to the DGZ's uh engineer's estimate?
Yeah.
Okay, so my first question is, is that demolition for fifty five thousand? Is that uh the Jerkovich Pier?
No. That's.
What is that? What what is that?
Let me go. Let me bring up the image here.
And Councilmember Denson, can you acknowledge that you've joined us?
Yes, I am here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, can you see my cursor, Councilmember Franch?
Yes.
Okay, so that is demolition from everything from this platform out to what we have noted as the relocated gate. There's there's piling and removal of all of this in here. And and again, I I we can look at the actual cost here. This is just for budgeting purposes. If they put ten thousand dollars there and or if the contractor bids ten thousand, it then that's how much it saves us. If the contractor bids ninety thousand, then that's how much it costs us. This this isn't setting the price for construction.
Does that include the existing ramp?
It does.
But Jeff, the the problem is is when the that this is an engineer's estimate. And when we go out to bid for these projects, the construction companies see what this page is and they see that this is what the city's budget had to spend.
No, they see this dollar right here or sorry, this this uh well, they see it and they see this dollar here, five sixty plus tax. That's.
Is this? This is a public meeting.
It is a public meeting, yes.
So I mean, this is not privileged information that we're looking at.
It's not, but but they don't ask for this information and.
But they don't need to ask for it because they this is available anywhere.
Uh yes, but you're right. But if you were to actually look at compare the engineer's estimate of any project and compare it to the actual awarded project, the numbers don't match. The it's all they care about is the total at the bottom.
Well, um I I'm telling you, um what what number, where where did DGZ derive these figures from?
Uh let me let me show you. There's there's a list. Uh I have this list here if you want to see it. Or let let me just call it out to you here. Sorry, just a minute. Uh they they derived the list from a number of projects that have happened since two thousand seventeen. And those include Bainbridge Island City Dock in Winslow from two thousand eighteen. Ansich Waterfront Park Phase One, City of Gig Harbor, two thousand nineteen. Port of Friday Harbors Activity Float, twenty twenty. De- Delco Pier and Floating Dock in Port Orchard, twenty eighteen. Harper Pier in Port Orchard, two thousand seventeen. Heron Island Ferry Terminal Dolphin Replacement on the Key Peninsula, two thousand eighteen. That's where they got these estimates from and the bid prices.
Well, I I sure would have liked to have seen that because these 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 numbers are the they're absolutely ridiculous, to be quite frank with you.
Well, if Councilmember Franch, if you would like to see those bid uh unit bid prices for those projects, we will send them to you. But it doesn't have a germane impact on what the actual construction costs will be for this discussion and how we're going to fund the project.
Well, when I'm when I'm looking at at a bid from marine floats right now, that talks about uh one sixty foot ramp, full length handrail, runoff plate, wheels, ramp guides, ramp connection hardware, transition plate, uh eighty feet of six foot wide floats, cleats as needed, galvanized engine float, eight float stops with stub pilings, demolition, mobilization for ninety eight thousand dollars from a year ago. And I see a bid now like this. Something just does not make any sense.
If you'd like, I could go through line by line of the bid and show you where that marine floats quote from two thousand twenty didn't include much of the requirements that we have. And you'll be surprised that the marine floats quote is about four hundred fifty thousand dollars shy of where our quote is.
Okay, can can you go back to the to the DGZ quote? And right when I got kicked off now, I I heard the mayor asking about something about lighting.
Yes.
Uh what what was I I that's when I lost the connection. So what what was your guys' final decision on that lighting?
So those three items at the very bottom, lighting, uh electrical, electrical lighting, electrical wiring cable, electrical boxes and supports. The bid items for wiring cable and boxes supports are simply to remove the existing electrical connection that goes from the pier to the Jerkovich's float and replace it with new wiring electrical. Even if we put no lighting on the dock, we still have to pay for those two costs. Because we're not going to reuse the Jerkovich's old wiring.
Well, i- is that not something that our crew could, our city crew could possibly do?
We cannot split the bids. That's illegal.
What do you mean split the bid?
We can't take bid items from a project like this and assign some of them to our city crew to do to reduce costs.
But we have not gone out for requests for 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 bids yet.
It doesn't matter. The project scope requires us, if we remove the dock, we have to do the electrical work because we have to replace the electrical wiring that's removed. So i- it's not an additive part of the project. It's not. And what what you could do is if you were replacing the dock uh with with this community paddler's dock, you could have the public works crew do some uh ancillary work on the uplands or you could have them do some ancillary work nearby, but you can't have them perform a key scope of the project that if they don't do it, the contractor has to do it to have a complete project.
Early on in in my administration, I tried to take a couple items out and have us do it or this or that. And we can't, by law, you can't pick and choose which items you want in and out. It's either all in or all out.
Well, uh uh.
So again, Councilmember Franch, I I have a a screenshot that will show how that quote that you have compares. Uh let let me just go through and and people might have wondered why I included things like erosion control sheet in the memo and why I included the last sheet that has to do with the end boat mitigation. Those two items are not included in the marine floats quote. So just as an example, if you look up here, temper erosion set up control, six thousand dollars. That's not included in the marine floats. Uh mitigation, thirty thousand dollars, not included in the marine floats. Um the gangway going down to the community paddler's dock is much different than the gangway that is quoted in the marine floats. They didn't include tax. Look at how much the taxes, fifty three thousand dollars. They didn't include contingency, sixty one thousand dollars. They didn't include inspection and surveying. I have those all broken out if you if you'd like to look at those.
Why? What what is what is driving the cost of forty four thousand dollars for construction inspection?
That is for the DCG to support us during bidding to verify that the materials that are submitted by the contractor would be the materials that we're requiring. Now, if we don't always spend that money, that's just um our and and that's misleading. It should say construction support is what that should say. It's not inspection. We're going to have our own uh our own staff inspecting this project. But there is some support that we need from the from the engineer of record and that's what that money is there for.
Well, I this is troubling on so many different levels that that I I can't, I I I cannot emphasize enough how troubling this is. And oh, I'll leave it at that for now.
Uh Rodenberg.
Yeah, I I have a couple of comments. Um can you go back to the funding slide? So Jeff, are you saying that the the center columns proposed twenty one, twenty twenty one amounts? Uh if we took the funds from those particular buckets, uh that it would be done?
It would be done. It would be done, yeah.
I want to thank you for being creative and finding those sources of income. And and I'm in I'm in favor of the of the of all of what you've said here. If you look at the uh the ending fund balances, they're all healthy. Uh that's what those balance, that's what those funds are there for, for things just like this. So I'm in favor of uh exactly what you've thought of, Jeff. And secondly, just something about the lighting. Uh I don't think we're talking about activity lighting. You need a certain amount of lighting out there for security purposes. You can't have, you can't have a dark pier or float and and it it's an attractive nuisance. You're gonna have people out there legally or illegally, but you can't have it dark. So certainly needs some electrical. And as far as budgets, uh I you know, I've quoted a lot of really large, large jobs. I always knew what the budget was, but all these contractors, they're in a competitive situation. They're not going to look at what the budget is and they decide that's how much we can get. They're going to look at what they can do, make a decent profit on it and and then quote that. Uh and the guy that looks at the budget, uh he's not going to get the job. The guy that looks, the contractor that looks at uh what he can do and make a profit is going to get the job. So uh thanks, Jeff, for finding all this information, buying all these buckets of money. I'm uh consent of what you've said here. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Rodenberg. Just a comment on the lighting. One thing that we have to consider and one reason we've been supportive of continuing to have lighting shown as a as a cost is that the Jerkovich family, they still have twenty four seven access out to their float system. We feel like we need to be able to provide lighting to for their safety to be able to get down to their float system. Right now, they have some lighting out on their float system that's part of their pedestals. And um to remove one of their pedestals and take off some of that lighting, we think that we need to be able to replace that lighting so that they're they they can see as they walk down to their boats in the dark.
Councilmember Franch.
Yes, thank you. Uh yeah, I I I believe that that we need some lighting for safety reasons as well. But sixteen thousand dollars when it comes to electrical and lighting is absolutely ridiculous. And it it it, I don't know how many council are aware, the lighting system at Ansich Park, the the lighting system that we get a construction uh estimate on lighting down there, the lighting system down there, we can't even control, it's controlled somewhere out of state electronically. So a- as far as my trust in these consulting companies coming up with these uh amounts that they are calculating in to get the job done is I I take a lot of exception with Councilmember Rodenberg's comments. Um it lighting is good, but lighting at a reasonable cost is what I'm after. And as far as finding the money, that that's why I I and I'm very happy that our city is fortunate enough to have a very healthy general fund and we are a very fortunate city financially in general. But that doesn't mean we need to recklessly spend the money just because we found it. That every 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 money dollar that we recklessly spend is another dollar that we don't have to spend on another project somewhere else to help our citizens. And to me, this is reckless spending.
So to be clear, um the lighting for the existing Phase One Ansich Waterfront Park is controlled in the boat storage building. The manufacturer is from somewhere else in the country, but I can tell you George Flanagan has programmed that lighting and it he does it down in the uh maintenance room of the boat storage building. He has to, he has had to contact the manufacturer to understand that. Yeah, but it is controlled there and the dollar amounts for the lighting were originally set north uh of more than fifty thousand dollars. And so we have pared it down to what we think is the absolute bare minimum just to provide a safe lock area for the Jerkovich family.
Okay, so we need to decide on um, again, this is an estimate and it's um you know, they if someone asks to bid on it and it's not set in stone, we need to decide right now. We've got a contract or we've got agreement with the kayakers. I thought it was four hundred with the hopes of five, but I don't think they committed to five. with the hopes of five, but I don't think they committed to five. I think it was the hopes. It was four with the hopes of five at 166 installments. Uh, it had so many years to do it.
It was five, Mayor. It was the, the exact language, it, it's provided in this the information for this meeting. It was not less than five is the language.
Okay, um, all right, so the, I think we've all agreed we want this built. You know, we've talked about this for many years. We want to get this built. We want this to start happening in fall. Um, and get this really done. Question is how are we gonna pay for it? You know, we've come up with ways that the city can pay for it. And then we either pay for the whole thing or we ask the kayakers for a percentage of the money and we go back to them. So we need feedback from you, uh, Councilmember Heinz.
Yeah, we, we, we have a design right now and we have a, an estimate. Uh, have we approached anybody else for an estimate? Or is this the only estimate we've got for this design?
This is the only estimate we need. I, I, I don't know what approaching anyone else will, for another estimate will give us because it's just for funding purposes. If we get uh, again, this is where staff looks to council to say that y- you can set the budget wherever you want. What really matters is what the actual price comes in at. So just as we did with well number three, a few months ago, we were told that that was costing us too much and to get a lower estimate, we got a lower estimate. The price still came in at a million dollars where staff originally thought it would come in.
Didn't we pay $15,000 or so to DCG to do this?
Well, this is, you're right. This is included in their cost. If we bring someone else in to do an estimate, we're gonna pay quite a few thousand dollars to provide an, a, another estimate to review this. But what, the question is, is what is that new estimate going to provide us? If it's gonna provide us a lower bit, bid amount when we go out to bid, then we need to do that as a cost comparison and see if there's value in that. If it's not gonna cost, if, if spending $5,000 more to get another estimate is not gonna change the bid price that bidders provide the city, we've just lost $5,000.
Right, and I also might add, rarely do we pay for a consultant to give us a price. Uh, and I haven't seen it, and then go out to another consultant to give us another price when we haven't even got the bids yet. Um, the other thing is if you know, we, if we, this, this isn't what the bids are coming in at. Uh, we have to take, by law, we have to take the lowest bid, correct, Jeff?
Correct, yes.
And for some reason, if we really, really didn't like it, we can, we can reject all bids. Um, but we can't, we can't put it right back out the same way, correct? We have to change the scope, correct?
Well, we, we could, we could put it back out the exact same way. It's just unlikely that we would get bids would then probably be a little more expensive because then all of the bidders who bid, their numbers are out there for everyone else to assess.
Right, got it. Councilmember Woo.
Yeah, we, we
Sorry, were you not finished, Councilmember Heinz?
Ho- ho- hold on a second. I'm not done.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I understand we can't change the laws that dictate the bidding process for, for state items. That's out of our control. Um, and, and I, and I accept that. I don't like it, okay? And by the way, I'm convinced on a really competitive basis. You could do a heck of a lot better than this. I'm absolutely convinced of it, okay? If, for example, if I put Ford Motor Company on this thing, I'm sure the price could come down significantly. Okay, absolutely. Um, and by the way, we're in a tremendously, uh, growth oriented environment. Um, on the funding idea relative to uh, what Councilmember Ron Rodenberg was suggesting, we pay the whole freight. Uh, I, I really have a problem with that philosophically. I really do, called. At the end of the day, Jerkoviches get a new, a new pier that they were gonna have to replace. They win. We, the, the, the kayakers get something that was gonna cost them $500,000. It's now free, okay, originally, okay? Or something in between. It's free. And we end up paying equal to or more than what we started with in the original design of the dock. I, this is welfare on a grand scale.
Let me, let me be clear that any money that the kayak team was gonna raise was a rent credit and they were gonna have, it would just be reducing their other amount that they were gonna pay the city. So if they don't fundraise, then we're going to get the funds regardless because they're going to likely stay in the canoe and kayak storage building. So it's pay now or pay later. I think it's the same amount, but I'll let council decide.
But over the long haul, they'll still be paying for it.
Either way, they're paying for it. Whether it's through rent credit or whether it's through true rent. The dollar, uh, if you look at the amount of money that we charge the kayak team, it continues to go up at a cola rate. It, remember, it was originally $1,500 a month. It's now increased to, I think it's ni- 1,900. Anyway, we continue to go up, up, up and they continue to take that what was 70 plus thousand dollars and we are crediting their rent against that. And the same thing would happen here. So either way, either they pay now or they pay later.
But it might be a perception too. This might be what he means to, how it's perceived.
Could you lay that out?
Well, I, I, for this discussion, again, that's it, that's part of the discussion that we have to discuss of how we're gonna modify the canoe and kayak race team's amendment. That's not what we're here today to talk about. I'm, I'm trying to, I'm saying that there's an issue with the funding in, based on the estimated amount versus the budgeted amount. I'm proposing that we have, if, if the, if the true bid comes in at, let's just say, $730,000, how can we fund it? And I'm proposing what you see on the screen here.
Yeah, but and, and I'm, and what I'm suggesting is, and by, by the way, I, I, I hear you talking. But if it's that bad of a deal, why did we ever have them paying $500,000 in the first place? And us, or, yeah, 700,000 for the city, okay? By the way, I, this is part of the funding discussion. I'm not, I'm, I'm talking about this little line here.
Originally, the
kicks in.
Originally, that whole donation for the canoe and kayak race team was set forth because they were gonna pay um, uh, uh, they were gonna, their $500,000 originally was gonna pay for most of the uh, dock that was conceived back in 2016.
Okay, so I wanna, I can, we can come back, uh, Councilmember Heinz, uh, Councilmember Woo.
Um, yeah, so Jeff, this is the best way that you see to fund this project?
Well, it's the best way to fund the project and keep it on schedule.
Okay, that's my thing because I think that the community needs to see this on schedule. If we can, uh, and that would be for the fall and, and if we can get some money from the kayak team, if they'd like to do something, that would be great. But I think the most important thing is to make this fundable is is to have it funded and to make it usable for our community this year, so.
And I think we're all in agreement to build it at the same timeframe. It's just if we're gonna pay for it all ourselves, or we're gonna ask them to reimburse us some. Councilmember Rodenberg.
Yeah, a, a couple of things. We have to remember that uh, this dock and the float system is not just for the kayak club. It's for the public. I don't think we should be putting it all on the kayak club. You know, at first they were willing to help pay, then we said you didn't have to. Now we're gonna tell them they have to. I think that the fact that this is dragged on for so long, uh, I think that the, the city ought to pay for it all in exactly the way that Jeff has laid it out. And as far as spending the money now or what Councilmember Franch said is, um, I forget his exact word, but he implied wasteful spending so we could save it for something else. When we get to that something else, it's gonna be the same argument. We need to save it. We need to save it. We need to save it and, and we'll never spend it. That's exactly what these funds were there for. I say that we should spend them and we should fund the whole thing, just like Jeff is suggesting.
Thank you. Councilmember Jensen.
Sorry, thank you. Sorry, I came late to the conversation. Um, I, I agree with what Councilmember Rodenberg and Woo are saying and, and probably some others that spoke. And I think, um, Mr. Langhale made a good point that the kayak club is still going to be paying because any donation they made was gonna be a rent credit anyway. So we're still going to be getting the revenue from the canoe and kayak club. And like, um, like Councilmember Rodenberg said, this is a community paddler dock. It's open to everyone. And that's the way I've been talking about it and, and hopefully the whole community is seeing it because it's, it's really to benefit the entire community.
Okay, I'd like to, it's, it's a little unusual, but not that unusual. You know, we do have a representative that's been listening from the canoe and kayak club. And since we're talking about, you know, them and, and this, I think it's important to see if Kirsten, you know, had something to say because again, this is we don't, you know, just like the fishermen, we don't really want to decide all sorts of things without, without letting them speak too. So who has control of it? If they, if Kirsten, if if you want to speak, I think, uh, if you have anything that you'd like to add to it, I think it's important to let you have a chance. And I think we've got, if you, if you unmute yourself, Kirsten, I, um, I think you're able to speak.
Okay, okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, thank you all for your discussion and consideration of this. Um, this is like, like you all, I guess this is our first time of seeing these, um, numbers specifically uh, laid out, so, um, it's, you know, a, a lot to take in, uh, obviously with COVID. Uh, fundraising for nonprofits is a big problem. Uh, a- and I would just put out there, I'm not, yeah. Uh, I'm not saying any thing dispositive on the, the team's position on this, but I would say that um, trying to do a capital campaign of a project that's already built and funded like years after the fact would be a, a very difficult task to undertake, asking for money from uh, grant agencies, uh, foundations or individual funders for something that's already built and paid for um, will be, be tricky to do.
Thank you, Kirsten. Is Matthew Kearns, is, is that a person on the board of the kayak team?
No.
Okay.
Um, Mayor, can I also just reiterate that, uh, or, or make a note that, um, one funding option that I don't have shown up here because it's not for sure and we're just talking about it, but uh, Kirsten Gregory and city staff and I are trying to apply for Port of Tacoma Investment Funds. Um, we're looking to, uh, ask for probably, they, they said what a reasonable ask, they're, they're giving, they're, they're giving away $250,000 total. Uh, a reasonable ask is, is less than $100,000. So we're gonna be a- applying for that, uh, investment fund application. It's, it's like a grant, but it's technically not a grant, uh, that is due February 26th. So that, if we do receive that money, if it is in the $80,000 range, of course, it's gonna offset anything we see here. So just a side note.
Right, and I might let council know that we were, we found out about that grant from one of the people, uh, that sits on the board of the port of the port. So she encouraged us to apply and it looked better if we applied as opposed to the kayak team. Um, so again, we are gonna try for that. Uh, so there, there's a fairly good chance. Council, uh, thank you, Kirsten, very much. Um, Councilmember Franch.
What kind of grant did you say that was?
Well, it's called, uh, investment fund. Uh, let, let me pull that up here just a second. I forget the, the, the full term of that, but I can find that in just a minute here.
Uh, Jeff.
So, another Oh, yeah, Kirsten might have it, actually.
Another thing
Just for council's, um, knowledge, Jeff and I have been working on this together for several weeks. Um, and we just actually had a meeting with the port, um, staff right before this meeting. It's the Local Economic Development Investment Fund.
Thank you.
Right. We also found out that that is used for tourism. So economic development, it's, it's based on tourism, so it and we were told by Jeff that it makes much more sense if you're funding some of it by tourism too. It looks a lot better to the port that you're taking some of your tourism funds to fund the type of grant that they're actually wanting to give you to.
Okay, well, that, that's fine because I am hoping that we will be able to get the port to, um, help, uh, fund the home port facility, so, um, th- it sounds like this is a different, uh, pot of money, so to speak, that they'd be using for a project like this. So that's, uh, that's good news. Um, the, you're right, um, this, this float system is for the general public. Um, so the kayak club is not the exclusive user of this, but that is, um, the, the reason that they are participating or over the years, the, call it whatever you want, the, 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 the different maturation of the funding sources is because they are getting 60% use of a publicly funded building that the community should have 100% use of. So, uh, that is why they are participating in the funding of these floats, from my perspective. Um, I, I still, I, I, just coming back around to what Councilmember Heinz was talking about. I think it would be money well spent to go out and get a different engineer's estimate um, to rein these costs in because, um, I, I know Jeff keeps telling us that, excuse me, this is, uh, not a bid, but, um, contrary to what Councilmember Rodenberg thinks, um, I believe that when construction companies are funding capital projects by cities, they keep a very close eye. I know for a fact that they keep a very close eye on what the budget amounts are. And it's not that, um, they're gonna look at a project and say, well, yeah, it's actually gonna cost me 100,000 and I need to make $50,000 a reasonable profit and I'll be happy with that. If they can gouge you for $100,000 profit, they're gonna do it every single time. And they do look at these numbers and they do base, they, they end up crafting their numbers to come up close to whatever the budgeted amount is.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Rodenberg.
Yeah, just on, on that point, uh, i- it's important to note that, uh, the kayak club, uh, although they are a club, they are a member of our community. So it is community use, even though it, it doesn't, just because you're a member of the kayak racing club doesn't mean you're not a, a member of the community. And as far as, uh, quoting, uh, to a budget that you see, I disagree because I've quoted a lot of these things. If you think you're gonna be able to gouge the city for $100,000, there's always gonna be the contractor that is only gonna wanna make $50,000 because that's what's fair. And if you don't, you don't build a business by trying to gouge, uh, your customers. So, uh, I, I disagree wholeheartedly in Mr., in Councilman Franch's remark.
Okay, I've seen a lot of, uh, crazy consulting estimates that were just, you know, they were, they could be way off and it didn't matter. They still, the consultant still got paid everything that they, that they charged us and they were way off, you know? Um, usually they were way too low. And it came in, you know, 20, 30% more and that's what we had to pay. And, uh, so I think, you know, personally, I think we need to get this done. And, um, this is not, this is not a bid. This is, um, and I, and I've also seen where, you know, you go back out to do things, things again and then it comes even, even higher. And let, let's say the next bid for the consultant comes in at 850. Well, if we're worried that the, the contractor is gonna bid based on that, well, we just increased the project. So, um, I think we should, we should use what we, what we've got. I think we should go out for bidding. And if some council members feel that we should pay it all and some council members feel that the kayakers should pay for some of it, maybe we should split the difference and say, well, we'll fund it and the kayakers can, uh, can do a fundraiser for 100,000 and, uh, more than the 70 that they've already spent and leave it at that. And then, so, you know, kind of work with that and then get it going. You know, I know that they did have some funds available from some of the, uh, uh, ro- rotary. I, I do know that they had $50,000 possibly available from the morning rotary and, um, that might still be available. I think it might. So maybe, maybe we, we just go with this bid and we ask them to, to do a fundraiser to reimburse us afterwards of 100 grand and we get it done. But either way, I think we wanna, we wanna get going. That was a way of maybe split That was a way of maybe splitting the difference of council. So what about thoughts on that? Councilmember Dinsen, we want to get going. We also want to, we have one other topic, so we don't want to go too long, but this is important. Go ahead, Councilmember Dinsen.
Yeah, I agree. We want to, we just need to get going on this and I think it's really up to the canoe and kayak team and what they want to do. I mean, I think that if Kirsten could take it, Kirsten could take it back to her board if they're willing to contribute, wonderful. If not.
Right now, they're on for 500. So I think 100 is, right now it says they have to do 500.
And.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Sorry, Mayor. Yeah, and so we do, we do need to renegotiate that lease amendment that we have. Otherwise, they're going to continue to be on the hook for that $500,000. So I think, and that, again, that first installment is due in April. So this is, this discussion is on this date so that we can inform council that the costs are higher than anticipated and in preparation for the upcoming discussion we need to have with the canoe and kayak racing.
Yeah, we have to reach out to the board and tell them, okay, it's changing to whatever this is. Councilmember Rodenberg.
Are you looking for an action from the council, Mayor?
Yeah, yes, we're looking for suggestions for council to go to the kayakers.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'd like, so again, I heard some councils say, you know, we should fund it all and, and not have them funded even after. I heard some say they should fund seven, whatever it was, five twelfths or so. I'm coming up with something where, you know, maybe they fund, we go back to the kayakers and ask them to fund 100 after we get this thing built, council, or if they get it sooner, and do the same kind of payment. So if it was 166 before, it would be like 50. And then the other 50, you know, I think we gave them three years or something to pay for it. Councilmember Luke.
I actually like that idea. I mean, if they can't do it, then we should go ahead and fund it. Well, we're going to go ahead and fund it anyway. So this would just be a comeback to us afterwards. I like that idea if they, if we can get them to agree to it, that they would pay 100,000. I think that 300,000 is too much. So that's where I am.
Thank you. Councilmember Heims.
Yeah, since I threw that idea out there, I obviously think it's, that's the way to go. I think there has to be some equity in this thing, at least the appearance of equity on the part of the kayak and racing club. They really do. And by the way, they had agreed early on that when it was 1.2 to 500,000. Okay, so I think it's the, I think it's the right thing to do ethically. Okay. I think it's definitely the right thing to do. So it's 100,000, 150,000, it's a heck of a lot less than 500,000, put it that way. And to me, it would be, if you're looking for a number, you know, well, and maybe you throw out a number and as high as this, as low as that, and you let them come back and say, this is what we're willing to do. For example, I'd say 100,000 is absolutely the bottom level. Okay. And, you know, that 300,000 would be the top level. That would be the five twelfths of, of 700 and some thousand dollars. And I remember correctly from your numbers there, Jeff, I think you were 300 and something. It's in that range, put it that way.
Right, and one thing is if they're getting money off their rent and it's the same amount, but it shows the community that we're, we're getting them to come to the plate as well, as you said. Councilmember Rodenberg.
I'd like to make a motion that the city fund the project as Jeff has recommended for $730,000 and a goal of negotiating the agreement with the kayak club to fund $100,000 of that. And with a further goal of the city going after Port of Tacoma grant up to $100,000.
Second.
Okay, Josh, can you just show your face so I know you're there? So is it okay to do, are we, we're okay?
No.
Are we?
Yeah, you can make motions in a study session. That's actually the preferred way to do it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we've got a motion, we've got a second. Councilmember Aborsol.
Yeah, I would like to amend everything, or amend just one thing in Councilmember Rodenberg's thing, change it from 100,000 to 300,000, but stick with everything else.
Okay. Is there a second?
Could he explain that? Councilmember Aborsol, could you explain that?
Yeah, so everything that Lee said we'd keep except for the asking price of the kayakers that I believe Councilmember Rodenberg said 100,000, I would amend it to 300,000.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, the amendment dies. I don't think the council would have 300, so I think that would be really hard to go there.
I had my hand up when you said.
Okay, go ahead, Councilor.
I was seconded.
Okay, he's second. Okay, there's discussion. Um, you know, 300, I know that they had agreed to more, but that's a lot. So I think it's, I think it's too high to get this, to get this going. That's my own personal thought.
Are you looking at hands or are we just open dialogue, Mayor?
I'm trying to see who's on first, who's on second. So Councilmember Rodenberg.
Yeah, I think that we couldn't tie this to a fixed figure of negotiating with the city, I mean, I'm sorry, negotiating with the kayak club. If you want to have a goal of 300,000 with a acceptance at $100,000, that makes sense. I don't think we, I don't think these are the times that you can ask kayak club for $300,000, given their, their COVID and their fundraising thing. So $100,000 minimum and the city should do the best they can. And if the city needs any help negotiating, I'd be glad to help.
Councilmember Franch.
Yeah, I, as, as Mr. Langham pointed out, it, you know, from my perspective, it's pay me now or pay me later. It's, you know, all of this is just, every dollar we get from them upfront is a credit towards the rent. It's just that much less rent that we're getting on an ongoing base basis. So I don't really see the benefits by trying to get any more money out of them upfront because we're going to be getting the money on a monthly basis. So yeah, that's, that's how I feel about that.
Okay, I also, you know, back to bids, you know, they're listening too. So you can't, you can't say, well, let's, let's ask them if they'll do this and if they won't, they can go down to this. You, you can't do that. You have to, you have to say what you're going to do and stick with that.
I call the question, I call the question on the amendment.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor of stopping discussion on the amendment and going to the vote, say aye.
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 Opposed? Next, we're going to vote on the amendment, which is to ask the kayakers to fund $300,000 of it after we, after we get it done, you know, reimburse us. All those in favor of that amendment say, I'm going to do a roll call. All those in favor say aye. I'm going to start with Councilmember Luke.
No.
Councilmember Heims.
Aye.
Councilmember Rodenberg.
Nay.
Councilmember, this is harder on the spot, Aborsol.
Aye.
Councilmember, are you taking this, Josh? Okay, Councilmember Franch.
No.
Councilmember Dinsen.
No.
Okay, I can't tally what, I don't have everyone's names down.
Two to four.
Motion failed?
Motion fails, two to four.
Okay, back to the original motion. Any further discussion on it?
Could you tell me what the original motion is?
Yeah, the original motion is for us to fund the kayak, to fund the dock as Jeff has laid it out and, and seek out to the kayak club reimbursement of $100,000 in the same structure of payments as we had it before.
And to pursue the Port of Tacoma grant.
Correct. And we had a second. Did you have a question, Josh?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify before we vote. So I believe this motion would trigger staff and Finance Director Rodenbach's not here, but I think this would trigger us to come back with a budget amendment ordinance. And it would also trigger staff to go to the lodging tax advisory committee and inform them that council's expressed intent to use another 100,000 so we can get their input on that. Is that correct?
Yes. Okay. Okay, so why don't you tally the, this vote too? Because again, I, I have to prepare for this with everyone's names and stuff. So to accept this motion, all those in favor, say aye. Start with Councilmember Luke.
Aye.
Councilmember Heims.
I'm staying.
Councilmember Rodenberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Aborsol.
Aye.
Councilmember Franch.
No.
Councilmember Dinsen.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, I'm glad we got really, you know, we want this done this year. So I'm really glad we're done with this. We, this gives staff clear direction. Josh, go ahead and do those things that you mentioned. We just had an LTAC meeting today, so, but whether LTAC supports it or not, council can still do it. So I'm glad that council gave us good direction. We're going to get going on this. So I also want to say that council was a little bit concerned about the, the kayakers putting a lot of signs and sponsorships out on the dock. And I think that they won't probably have to do that when we're lessening them out as we are. And that's important to how clean our harbor looks too. So with that, we're going to go on to our second item, which is property west of the treatment plant discussion. I'm going to let, you know, Jeff, Councilmember Dinsen and Katrina have been working on a project. So which one of you want to start?
I could jump in, I can, I'm also going to bring up on screen a map showing this area. So, yeah, so for those of you who might be familiar and Community Development Director Knutson also is very familiar with this, Pierce County has a program called Conservation Futures by which you can apply to them to acquire properties, to put those properties into a conservation type easement or purchase. It essentially stops the property from being developed. Projects, my understanding, projects that are likely to be successful, those types of grants are ones that have development pending or likely to occur on them. And so we have one here in the city of Gig Harbor that we've been looking at and I'm going to share my screen with you. This is just north of the treatment plant. So here's the treatment plant. We own that property. We also own this property here and we own this property here. So, and then the Austin street comes in here to Harborview Drive. So this is a little over, right around eleven and a half acres, owned by a family and they have the potential to develop it. I don't have the layer on here for creeks and drainages, but Donkey Creek, AKA North Creek runs right through here. And so we've been talking with the property owners, a collective group of property owners, their agent, real estate agent, the Pual tribe and Forterra about what it might take to apply for this Conservation Futures Grant application on this property and who would be filling which role. Right now, the Pual tribe has originally considered being the applicant for the grant and potentially taking some level of ownership in it, but they found that they're not eligible to apply for the grant and likely not, would not be taking ownership of it. So the city and Forterra have, have been willing to fill some of those roles. Forterra is there helping us with possibly the grant application. By the way, this grant application is due to Pierce County, I believe it's March 15th. So somebody tell me if I'm wrong on that, but I think that's March 15th. And so we are looking to apply for the grant and we're going to be requesting formal council action to do that, but then put this property, if successful, put this property into ownership of the city parks system. This is, this will be very similar to what we've already done with the 20 acres that we own north of Woodhill Drive along McCormick Creek, next to lift station 12, Burnham Drive. So there's a lot of options here that, right now, the rough price and Councilmember Dinsen correct from Ron, but I think the rough asking price was in and around the $500,000 range. And as part of that, is that true?
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, as part of that, sponsors need to match 10% of the asking price. And so you're looking at $50,000. We have received word from Jennifer Keating, the Pual tribe, that the Pual tribe is willing to pay that $50,000. But there are other costs associated with it and potentially more match, stronger your, stronger your strength of your application. So the reason we're here today is to talk about this possible grant application, property acquisition, and then to see if the city would be willing to provide additional funding as matched to strengthen our application.
Right, and I did not know that we owned 4046. The parcel. Oh, that's, that's an added plus. I didn't know that. So that's huge. We did get word from the Pual tribe that the board voted last night to, to Matt, to do the 50,000. So what we're going to be asking council is if they would support it. I don't think it looks good if the city doesn't put anything in the game. So what we're going to be asking you now is if you would be willing to, you know, put in 10 or $20,000 of the city's money and the rest of it is going to be paid for by the tribe and by Forterra. Councilmember Rodenberg.
What does the tribe benefit from funding this?
I can answer that.
Go ahead.
And Councilmember Rodenberg, I know, this has taken a lot of turns. Originally, like Mr. Langham said, the tribe was going to be the applicant and receive the land and we weren't going to involve the city at all, or they weren't going to involve the city at all. But when they found out that they, they can apply, they can be an applicant, but they can't be a receiver. And I think it's just, it's just a little quirk in the county code that probably needs to be corrected. So when they found that out, then we started talking to Forterra. Forterra applies for these grants all the time. So we thought, well, maybe Forterra will take on the property. And Forterra is an organization that does land conservation all over. They're very successful with these. And Forterra said, well, yeah, we could do that, but then they charge like a storage ship fee and all of this stuff. So Forterra is like, well, would the city want to accept this land as part of their parks property? And so we had conversations with Jeff and Katrina, knowing that the city did not have the staff capacity to apply for the grant. Forterra said, we'll apply for the grant. They've got a really good relationship with the tribe because we do other conservation properties, but if the city can also be a sponsor of this grant and our main part literally would be to receive that property. And when we were talking with Jeff and Katrina, we came up with just a number of reasons why this is a really good idea. I mean, the basic one is that this property will not get developed. And we know all along Burnham is just going crazy with development. And this is right in our downtown view corridor. So that was really the impetus of this, to conserve the property in its natural state. We have a letter from the Wildfish Conservancy that surveyed this property a couple of years ago and it's like the best salmon habitat in Gig Harbor because of development that has happened elsewhere and we can provide that to you. It's really fascinating, the different kinds of salmon that are there and the riparian atmosphere and the coolness of the water. It's, they were very, very surprised. And a couple other things is it really protects our investments across the street and Donkey Creek, our culvert projects. And Jeff mentioned that down the road, we're going to need to be And Jeff mentioned that down the road, we're going to need to be doing a culvert replacement project. At some point, we're gonna be required to do that by the state. And also, we are probably going to need some right of way at that intersection of Austin and North Harborview, potentially for a roundabout at some point. So having this property will be of great, great convenience and benefit to the city. In terms of what, getting back to Council Rodenbergh's question, in terms of what the tribe is getting out of it, they're really just getting, A, the salmon habitat preserved, which is incredibly important to them as it is to us. So that's a, that's a mission of the tribe. They're, they're doing this, you know, wherever they can in, in their region is protecting critical salmon habitat. And also, we've learned the last couple months that this is in the area of their main village site back before the eighteen fifty's. So all of this, I'm sure, and, and they've said, has artifacts and had folks living on this property. So it has cultural significance as well, but nothing can be done with this property. It will be in conservation. It will be open space. Public will have access. Public must have access to this because of the county funds. So we've talked about, you know, doing trails through it similar to what's happening or what has happened on Soundview Forest. And Jeff can explain this better. This might end up being a better spot for that um, cut through trail that we've always wanted to have between downtown and the Cushman Trail because the topography is, seems to be better for this. So it would be less expensive to build. It's on our own property. We don't need the easement. So that's an opportunity we don't have to take, but it could be advantageous to the city. So to me, it just, the city is getting most of the benefit here, honestly. And if we can contribute a little bit of money, we'll get some more points, which will make us more competitive. But if we don't preserve this land, there's already folks looking, there's, there's pre-applications that have been presented to the city in the past to develop this property, like over thirty homes. And I don't want to see that happen. Thank you.
So would the tribe have control over the salmon habitat?
No, no, this is completely the city property, but we can't do anything with it either. It's just gonna remain in its natural state.
In most conservancies, you can't do anything on it. So, uh, are we wrong to think that we could build the Cushman Trail connection?
We can definitely put trails in through here. I don't know what stipulations they might have for, you know, like a paved trail or something. That's something that we would have to look at. Councilmember Rodenbergh, you're right. But they expect trails to be, I mean, other projects are, um, like park, this is a little bit of a different program. Other projects that they fund have trails going through. They, they fund traditional parks. So we let them know what we want to do, and we can put that in there as a possibility. And that way, we would reserve that right for the future. I think they would probably be very excited about it.
Thank you.
Katrina, can you mention what, what it could be? What we, what they had applied for a couple of years ago, what could actually go there?
Sure. Um, and again, this was, um, Councilmember Dinson referred to pre-application, uh, pre-engineering drawings that were done on this property. There was a pre-application meeting in twenty eighteen for this. I believe it was thirty eight homes, um, that was proposed on this. Again, we've had several code changes since then, so it may be a little below that number. Um, I guess Councilmember Dinson was correct.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Abersole.
Yeah, uh, I only, I just have two statements. Number one, I think if, uh, any partnership we can get involved with, with the tribe, any kind of relationship, we should be pursuing that. And, um, I, I like this idea. Uh, I would say Soundview Forest has got trails as well, and they're not paved. They're just uh, cut trails, and they qualify as trails. And, uh, that's about it.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Fran, I'm sorry, Councilmember Woo.
Yes, um, this is a great idea. And, uh, all we have to do is tell our citizens that we're saving this property and thirty eight homes are not going to go there. And everybody in this town will be all for it. So, uh, you know, because it, it is another growth issue and density issue. So I think our community would be totally in favor of this. And I am. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Franch.
Yes, Katrina, could you tell me about the topography there?
Yeah, I think Jeff can pull up the layer, actually.
I'll do that just a second.
Before he changes, if you imagine us saving that, if you look right over where all those parcels are, see how many parcel numbers are there? We really don't want that, we don't want the whole picture to be solid parcel numbers. We want some, we want some, uh, preserved land, in other words.
Just, just anecdotally, before Jeff's pulling this up, it is relatively steep. Um, as you, uh, the closer to Cushman Trail you get, and it flattens out, the closer to, um, Harborview Drive. But it is, it is a little bit steep, I believe, and Jeff again can pull up the contours, maybe.
And would there, would there be able to be homes along the, uh, the creek that, uh, I'm assuming it's marked North Creek there?
There we go. Um, there would be, the stream buffers would need to be maintained. That would be for fish bearing stream. I could, uh, look at the CIO later to see what those would be. Um, but definitely development could be on the western side of the parcel.
So there you see the topography.
Yeah, and yeah, that is quite steep. Uh, these are two foot contours. You can see the contours where the creek flows through the park, and then it goes uphill, couple of ridge lines. Um, yeah.
Right. So, I, I'm assuming that that, that the middle of that parcel to the west, that, that is, that looks awfully steep, looking at those contour lines.
It is. You can see there's already, yeah, you can see there's already a road, though. If you see that break in the contours, it flattens out there. There's already a road through here. So, um, it was just probably an old, uh, logging road or something when it was originally constructed or purchased. But the, the thought is, is that well, at some point, you could put a trail along here, maybe a switch back and come up to the Cushman Trail.
Right. I, I was just, I, I was trying to get more to the actual feasibility of developing a site like this.
Well, look at North Creek, uh, plat, that's just north of this. I mean, you can see how they have built those homes. I mean, I could, I could go pot, shift over to that, but you, everybody has probably driven up there now since they've built it. Those are quite steep. And if there is money to be made by doing more engineering, they will do that.
Right, and we don't want, we don't want to
I, 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 I think overall, this is a, it's a very good idea. Um, and to, any, anytime we can preserve um, open space like this, uh, I'm in favor of it.
And we don't want to put a lot of burden on staff. We heard from the survey that they don't want more parks to maintain. So I think we really want to keep it. Maybe way down the road, we do dirt trails, but otherwise we leave it alone. Councilmember Heims.
Yeah, I would, I would just echo that exact same line. I think it's a great, it's a great thing. Uh, I go along with the idea that, 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 keep it, keep it rustic. Do not pave anything in here. Uh, very similar to, uh, Soundview Forest. And, uh, maybe it will give us a, an oxygen credit or something, uh, down the line in terms of global warming called, anytime you can keep trees from getting cut down around here, it ain't all bad. So, um, I would definitely push on that.
Great. Okay, so we're looking for, I think, um, personally, I think ten thousand is a little bit cheap. Um, when we're paying other, getting other people to pay when it's almost five hundred thousand. So I, I think, uh, twenty thousand dollars seems appropriate myself. Um, I'd like a, a motion out there by someone. Uh, Robin.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that the council allocates twenty thousand dollars of its twenty twenty-one, or pledge, oh, hold on, Jeff's got a better idea.
Well, I'm sorry, just, I was gonna clarify. I, I, I believe we would come, I think maybe the motion could be to draft a resolution to come forth to council with just what you're saying.
Yes, and this would be, um, and Jeff can put this in better language. This will be a pledge. We will know in the fall whether this land is an awardee. And it won't close until next year. So the money would actually come out in next year's budget. So however, that would work. If we could have a resolution come back for the council to pledge twenty thousand dollars towards the conservation of this property.
Second. Okay, discussion, Councilmember Rodenbergh.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, isn't, uh, twenty thousand dollars within the purview of the mayor to designate without council approval?
Yes.
Uh, if it's in the budget already, that's the way our purchasing policy is.
If it's in the budget already.
Yes.
Yes.
Wow, okay.
Except for HBZ. But again, I would, I would only do something like this with council support, even with HBZ money.
Okay.
So, um, okay, there's a second. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, abstaining? Okay, so even though it's a pledge, I think, I think park is the best place to have the twenty come out of. Um, Josh, you're gonna need a, a placeholder for that, where that fund's coming out of, correct?
Well, I think if it's gonna be in the twenty twenty-one budget, we'll just have it in there when we come back in the fall.
Twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, we'll need to have it in the twenty twenty-two budget, since that's when the payment is, would be due. We would know.
Great. Well, I think this will say a lot to, uh, when, when Forterra's puts in their application, Jeff, now they can put in that we've, besides, we've, we've pledged too, correct?
Right, and the, I don't know if we can make it for the February twenty-second council meeting. I know Councilmember Dinson already has some good language already drafted that could fit into a resolution based off all her research. But, um, if it doesn't make it for the February twenty-second meeting, I think because the application is due on March fifteenth, maybe we could make it in the resolution at the March eighth meeting.
We might get, I, I told Josh to get, to not prepare it ahead of time, but to get ready.
Okay.
So I think by Tuesday, Josh, you with, with, uh, Councilmember Dinson, and then some help from staff, we could probably do it, right?
I think I have what I need. I can do it tomorrow.
Great.
And just a quick question, Jeff, do you think that this resolution is, is all we need, or should we also do like a letter of support from the city?
Uh, I, I think a letter of support as a cover letter saying, here's the resolution would be great.
Okay, and I can help with that, and so that the council can look at it and see if they agree.
So didn't we have all their signatures at one time for, uh, Josh, didn't we have all council's signatures electronically at one time when we did, we wanted their signature on something?
We've been using DocuSign for that. I think with the past council, we might have had digital signatures for everyone on file.
Okay, so if we have their name signed on it for DocuSign, would that be good?
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay, let's do that. That way it actually has your individual signature on there or whatever the computer generates. Councilmember Woo.
Yes, I just want to say, uh, thank you to Councilmember, um, Dinson and to Community Development Director Katrina Knudsen, and to Jeff Langham, and to the mayor, everybody who's worked on this. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And thank you, Councilmember Dinson and staff. Thank you. Okay, well, I think we've had a really productive meeting. I appreciate all your time. And, um, if I have a, Councilmember Franch.
I just like to say, Mayor, thank you. I, I didn't realize you had the purview to spend twenty thousand dollars unilaterally uh, out of the HBZ fund, but, uh, thank you for, um, relaying the fact that you wouldn't consider doing something like that without bringing it to council.
You bet. No, thank you. I would only want to have, do this if council supported. Thank you. Councilmember Abersole.
Woo, do a adjourn.
Second, somewhere?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All right, go play in the snow before it's dark.
Bye, everybody.
Bye.
Bye.